What beliefs among the towns?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Ansorgi?
Here.
Commissioner Rushton?
Present.
Chairman Bonnick?
Here.
Commissioner Wessel?
Here.
Commissioner Sussel?
Here.
Commissioner Rattenbach?
Here.
Commissioner Lautner?
Present.
All present.
Thank you. At this time, there's a public comment. Is there any comment before we started discussing the goals? Please, compose.
Short comment. I understand this meeting is specifically for discussing goals. I see nothing wrong with goals. I grew up with goals. You always do if you're a salesman, you always have goals. So I hope that we come out, and I've read some of your comments, agree with most of them, so I hope this is a successful meeting and we can come with some good goals for Leland County. That's it.
Thank you.
When all are pleased and tilts up. Good afternoon. I don't want to say good morning, but time flies when you're having fun. I looked at everyone's ideas for goals, and I laud the fact that you're going through this process. It's very important, and we're glad you're doing that for us, your constituents. Obviously, our longstanding goals for financial responsibility and paying down our MERS obligations are always important. I think it's also important to go after the services that we've already paid for by going after federal grants that are available. We've already paid that money. It's out of our pockets. And why not go after things that will make life for our family here in Leland County better? Will improve our lives. That is our responsibility to take care of ourselves, and that's one of the ways we can do it. We've already paid for it. Improving our Internet, oh my goodness, I'm so glad that's being worked on. Protecting our environment, our waters, both drinking water and the waters that we swim in, is of ultimate importance. Over 50% of our tax base comes from our residents who live on the water, and we need to guarantee that our citizens are drinking safe water. That's your job, and we expect you to take care of us in that way. Another way we take responsibility for ourselves and care for ourselves as a family here in Leland County. Working to ensure the futures of our children is another way that we take responsibility for ourselves. So I laud your efforts, and thank you for doing this. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Any other comment? Please.
Lois Bailey, Village of Suttons Bay. Get to give you my favorite causes. You probably know, renewable energy. You have a wonderful campus location here and plenty of rooms, so let's put up some solar panels and sort of live the example for the rest of the world. Recycling. I sit on the Solid Waste Council. 30% of the world's waste comes from the U.S., and we only have 4% of the world's population. So, how many plastic water bottles we have up there right now? Live the example, get rid of those. Improve housing, of course. I sit on the Housing Action Committee. We're working on a proposal of how the commission can be more involved and active in that, and I think we'll be making a presentation to you soon. And establish that septic waste ordinance somehow. And I think you could tie it immediately to short-term rental ordinance, seeing so many small cottages that have now become more intensely used, that are still on old septic systems. It's really very important for those to be inspected. So, thank you for listening.
Thank you. Please, compose.
I'm George Wellman. And I would like to see in the goals that you establish for the coming year, some endpoints that relate to action items. The things that you have as goals, I think should be judged on whether or not you actually achieved those goals. So if you say we should do something, I don't think it's sufficient just to have a meeting with a few people and say, well, we talked about it, but it's going to be harder to do than we thought. If you have an objective, I think you ought to have a measurable goal at the end to decide whether or not you actually achieved it.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, move on. It is a special meeting, so our agenda is set. So the purpose of the meeting is the discussion of potential actions. I guess the way it's been, I'm going to read this, the types of SMART Goal worksheet that has been presented, and I'll just read it, and then what I'd like is each commissioner just to talk about their goals, and we'll go through that, you know, in that order, and then we can have an open discussion on them. Does that sound, just to put some kind of a format to it. So, in this SMART Goal worksheet, it talks about initial goal. You write the goals you have in mind. What do you want to accomplish? Who needs to be included? When do you want to do this? And why is this a goal? You know, how can you measure progress and know if you've successfully met your goal? Do you have the skills required to achieve the goal? If not, can you obtain them? What is the motivation for this goal? Is the amount or effort required on your part with what the goal will achieve? Why am I setting this goal now? And is it aligned with the overall objectives? What is the deadline? And is this realistic? And finally, review what you've written, craft a new goal statement based on what the answers to the questions above have been, have revealed. So, just as a parameter, I mean, I know this talks about them being written, but this was just an idea of, if we can discuss it in that manner, I think that would help us. So, I don't know, we have the goals here, maybe we could take them in the order that they were written on the sheet, or do you want to go in reverse order, or by district?
Let Ty go first.
Yeah. So the administrator would like us to clarify this first, is Nat. As the goals and priorities, we all agree that to continue to be proactive on our additional MERS payment, continue to closely monitor the budget priorities, continue to explore options related to the HBAC project, and to continue with the substance abuse prevention coalition. I think all of us have agreed to that, and I think that will, those will be continuance and part of what we are going to accomplish this year. So, any other comments about any other things before we start? So if you would, Commissioner Wessel, would you be willing to go first?
I would. I would add to the list that Mr. Janik put forth, I think we've all agreed that customer service is also one of those things that we continue to strive for in all of our department, all services to residents. So, I don't think we need a specific goal relative to customer service, but I think we're about that. I put forth a couple of, we are so fortunate, and we have so much to be thankful for. I think goals sometimes are those things we put forward that fill in some gaps that we perceive, or some challenges that we perceive. And I, so I spent some time thinking about, what do I worry about as a commissioner? And I worry about all sorts of environmental things, not just the septic, the water quality, runoff, stormwater, renewable energy. And I hope that at some point, we have a broad environmental goal, where we can lead the region, and lead the state even, in doing some things that protect our environment. Everybody comes here because we have the best resources in the state, I think, and I think we need to protect those. So, I put forward one environmental goal. Second thing I lose sleep about is, one out of three of our households, our Alice households, meaning they work hard, work full-time, and still can't afford some of the things that are necessary, early childhood, health, transportation, heat, housing. So I'm hoping that we get something for young family support in there. The third thing I worry about is the housing. In the state of Michigan, we have the biggest mismatch between the median income of our county and the median cost of homes. And I think we must, even though it's slow progress, I think we've made some progress there, and I'd like to see a goal relative to private-public partnerships, using a landbank, using a brownfield, and doing something about households. I'm also troubled that Leland County receives less federal grant money and less support for some of the things that are required for economic development, like broadband. And so I'd like a broad economic goal. And then I look at the latest report and the increasing number of seniors, and I think we must continue to see if there are ways that we can look to serve seniors better in this county. Not just an academic, and recreational kinds of things, but real true support for seniors, including transportation and heating and that sort of thing. And finally, and I put forward a goal on civility. I appreciate the opportunity we have as seven commissioners to work together, and I think we work pretty well together sometimes. But I think we need to pursue, continue to work towards civility and how we do business. I would like to see an ethics policy where we agree as a group, as a team, on how we're going to work together, how we're going to respect each other, how we're going to make our decisions together. And so I put forward those goals in addition to the ones that provides fiscal management, paying down MERS, customer service, and all of the things that we've all agreed upon. Those are the things I put forward. Thank you.
Well, I'm next on the list here, so, you know, so I'm going to just read the things I have, and then I'll make the comments. You know, I've got the continued working on increasing the broadband in the towers. I think that's a very important thing. I think that, I mean, myself, I just had to put in a second system for Internet because I just, my wireless is just not working, you know. Then finalize the airport decision. I think that's one of the most important goals that we'll have this year, to get that finalized and decide whether we're going to leave it as a commission, or we're going to, you know, do it as an authority, or it was suggested that we get out of it completely and just give it to Grand Travers County. You know, so I think those are the decisions that, I think that's one of the biggest we'll make, because that, not only Leland County, but the entire region is affected by that. The pertinent facts, when I put down the pertinent facts about water quality between Leland County and Benzine, I'm looking for facts, I keep asking for facts, on is there water cleaner than ours? I would like to see a test of if Benzine's water is cleaner than Leland Water, if it has less E. coli in it than Benzine's. I mean, they've had this in place for 28 years now. They've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not millions, on this type of ordinance. And are we, I mean, and it hasn't made them cleaner than ours. I mean, we don't know. We keep thinking it does. It sounds like it does, and everybody has good intentions of doing it. But to me, we're basing this on a feeling that it would help, not on the facts of the waters getting cleaner. So, I mean, even if we pay for that test to find out, you know, that our water's clean or not, then I could justify an ordinance. But until we have those kind of facts, I don't think we can do it. Everybody says septic's cause it, but we don't know that. I mean, we know that it does, but they're talking cities, they're talking huge places. Leland County's totally different. There's lots of sand, lots of different things. So, that's when I talk about pertinent facts. I'd like to see the difference. You know, we improve government services, and I think Ty touched on that. To me, we have to continue the education through, of the people here in the county, you know, through NMC, through whatever those classes that we have, that improve services and helps us be more efficient. So we don't have to add more people, do things. As we become more efficient, better, you know, and we encourage the data that's this, and the data programs that help them do their work, just as we have done with the Register of Deeds. You know, and continue to do that, and, you know, the fact that we helped Ron out in IT. I think we have to keep on top of that all the time and improve our quality. Then also, I think that the way we need to look at improving housing costs and expenses is by adding no new fees or taxes. We, it seems like every year, we come up with a new tax, a new fee somehow to charge the people of Leland more. And then we say, well, we need to have more affordable housing. But we continually add expenses to their homes, and I would like us to go. And then it actually goes a step farther, because we could reduce property tax. We've talked about it. We know we can afford it. It's been told that we can afford it. I mean, it's obvious to me, if we can loan $300,000, $400,000, or $289,000 to the Health Department, we've got the money, the $100,000 or whatever, $200,000, to give back to the people. I believe they can spend it wiser than we can. And I'd love us to make a goal that we reduce our property taxes in a sensible way, so that the people have their own money. To me, government takes the money, we always use 30%, 40%, 50% of it, and then gives the rest back to them, in means or other ways. But government uses the money up through its people, through its buildings, through whatever. And so I believe people can spend their money wiser than we can. So those basically are the goals that I have. Then the last one would be, we keep talking about renewable energy, but nobody talks about nuclear energy. That is really the way. If we want to reduce carbon, our carbon footprint, we have to talk nuclear. It's the only viable one. We know it's not going to be replaced completely by solar. It's not going to be replaced by wind. Neither one of them are, would come 100% reliable. So, nuclear is. And if we can do that, whether there are resolutions, something to encourage the state, you know, then I think that that's something that we could do if we want to talk energy. We have to include that, if we're going to be reasonable about it. So that, those are my comments. Thank you. So then, the next would be Commissioner Lautner?
Sure. Mine was simple. As I said from the very beginning, if I were to pick a goal, it would be for us to not do county commissioner goals at this table, for the reasons I stated previously, and Will touched on. When we create goals, we create more regulation and more taxes that I feel are unnecessary. I think it's important that we explore, going back to the Grand Travers County Health Department, for a partnership there, as we had 20 years ago. I think there's been a lot of things that changed since then, in that we could write a contract that would benefit us in ways that we're not being benefited in now. Obviously, develop a county, a campus policy for this campus. We have a couple of them now. I think that we need to really determine whether we want to start carving out portions of this campus for private business. And we also need to have an ordinance on how we, or a policy, I'm sorry, on how we develop this campus, if at all. We've done a couple of little things on our own that we just kind of did without this board voting on, and one of them was the walking trail for the employees, which is a really neat, awesome thing. I don't know if we did it right or not, but we could have done it differently and maybe served it better. The per-house health fee option is for certain programs we are responsible for here, but we could have a fairer taxing option rather than do ad verum taxing on our people, where it just is an unfair way of funding a lot of these add-on taxes. So anytime, we can do that. And I think that we need to push for that legislation, so that we have that as one more option for us to choose. The airport's been touched on. We'll discuss that MERS, obviously, as mentioned earlier. And recently, I've, interestingly enough, been approached by two different people in the last week, concerned about the amount of property being taken off the tax rolls by the conservancy. And the last one, I didn't follow it, but apparently it was a large, a very large parcel that we had been getting some tax dollars for, and I don't even know where it is. But now that's going to come off the tax rolls. So I would like for us to find out if we could get a list of all the properties the conservancy owns, and I know there's different levels. So how many acres are off the tax rolls? How many acres are in the conservancy but are paying taxes, and at what levels? So get that kind of inventory. I think that would be interesting. I want to know the facts before we can go further. So, I believe that that's all I had. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ansorgi?
My first goal was with the broadband. I think we all realize it's becoming, just like electricity almost, you know, it's becoming a utility that people need in their lives, businesses need. And I think there's opportunities out there now for some grant opportunities that we should be investigating. And one of the things that, when I was looking at a concrete thing that we can do, is each of the townships has a franchise agreement with people that run cable, electricity, whatever, through their road right of place. And one of the things that I read about on a national level was to come up with a model franchise agreement that we could share with the townships, just so when they're renewing, that there are things in there to encourage utility providers to expand their coverage. For instance, Spectrum offers cable TV and Internet service where they already have cables. But, you know, it's very difficult to get them to even specify, hey, I'm willing to pay to have a cable put in for my business. How much do I have to pay? And, you know, it's just a constant battle, and you'll get different numbers depending on when you ask, and all that kind of stuff. So, in these franchise agreements, there's language that can be put in there to encourage utility providers to expand their coverage to areas that they don't currently serve. And I would like to see if we could investigate, maybe coming up with a model to share with the townships, because some of our townships, you know, are not large townships as far as staffing goes. They don't have a lot of resources to do investigations and stuff like that. So I think that's something concrete that we could do that might actually have an impact in getting some broadband, expanded broadband coverage in our county. We know that our recycling thing is coming up this year, and so we need to determine what level of support for residential recyclings and put the mileage on a ballot as appropriate. And we're going to have a discussion on that tomorrow, it sounds like, on the agenda. So I'm not going to spend a lot of time talking about that, but I do have, you know, we're going to have to do something with that this year. Determine level of support for senior services and the mileage on that ballot. Again, that's coming up for renewal. We need to have that discussion. Do we need to do this, more, less, whatever? So, we need to have that discussion as well. Septic code. We can talk about a lot of different environmental things, but it's like eating an elephant, you know? You can only do it one bite at a time. So which bite do we want to take this year? You know, do you want to go after, you know, runoff into the lakes? Do you want to go after the septic piece of it? You know, I don't know. But if you don't take a bite at something, nothing will happen. And, you know, yes, there's, you know, you can have a very broad-range goal out there, but if you don't come down to a specific, how are we going to do this, and how are we going to measure that we actually get to do it? I think we should look at it and come to a conclusion and put it to bed, one way or the other, and quit having it looming over our heads as something that we just didn't do. Workforce housing, you know, we do have made some very, very modest steps in this regard. Again, if you look on a national level, one of the things that they, you know, they say it over and over again, they said it for years, what can you do to reduce the regulations to encourage this? And one of those things is zoning. It's one of the big things. And yes, we don't do set zoning, but again, we could provide some model language for our townships to say, if you are interested and serious about providing housing for people in your community, here's the things that you could consider modifying in your zoning ordinances. And come up with a model for them, just some ideas. Because again, we have all different levels of, excuse me, of staff out there in the different townships. A model would just give them something to look at and say, and that's kind of what I think about when I talk about and hear about county zoning. That's the role I think we're supposed to be doing out there. You know, we don't have, you know, zoning per se, but we review it and look at it from another level to say, are these townships working together? You know, okay, maybe I got a commercial zone, and it butts up a commercial zone in my neighboring township. You know, do we work together that way? And that's kind of what I see our goal is. And that's, I would like to see us, let's do something with housing and some zoning, specific zoning examples for our townships. And then the last thing I did is a code of ethics. I don't think that we really have an issue, but when I look at some of the discussions that's happening in Grand Travers County, I don't want to get to that point where we have a controversy. So, that's why I put it on there as an issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sussel?
Well, I appreciate Commissioner Wessel's comments because, about the fact that we live, and I know I'll speak into the mic, I know my voice doesn't carry, that we live in a county that offers us so much. You know, we are blessed with an abundance of resources, but we also have people who care, really care about their community, and they care about each other. And they want us, as, I want to thank everybody who made comments today and suggested recommendations, because this is very indicative of our community, where you care enough to come to a meeting and suggest goals that you hope that we will entertain, and I thank you for that. My suggested goals for this board were really drafted based on areas of concerns that I hear from the community. And those, of course, would be, as Tony you just pointed out, affordable housing for workforce, for families, for young families, for seniors that are downsizing, but how to do more with the tools that we already have. I mean, we have made some modest increases. And now I think with some of the recent forums that we had for Brownfield and Landbank that are pointing the way to how to utilize the private sector more effectively, which I think we have to do if we really want to make some progress. Our public sector, like Habitat for Humanity, are outstanding, but there's only so much they can do. So I think we have to find ways to encourage... So I think we have to find ways to encourage private sector participation in order to make some real dent in the housing. And also to work with our businesses and our residents to identify those properties and their communities that are blighted, that are obsolete, that are underused, and make recommendations back to Landbank and Brownfield so that we can explore those particular pieces of property and see if it's possible to return them to an effective use in our community. Also, in that area of interest, you know, the Clean Water Resources Initiative, I agree, Tony, we need to start somewhere. I would hope that we could find an ordinance, a septic ordinance as a beginning that would fit the needs of Lillenaw County, but return to that and try to come up with something. But then look at going further, even if it isn't this year, but look at going further to a plan that would really address the entire clean water issue. Other goals that I had were really to support the efforts of our departments. For instance, the Solid Waste Council, as Commissioner Ansari said, is up for renewal this year, and I think it's really important if we look at some of the expanded options that the council is looking at and ways that we can assist that effort. There are efforts already on septic inspection, which will be going further. And I think also avoiding duplication of efforts and continuing to partner with both governmental and non-governmental, governmental entities. We've made a lot of progress with our partnership with the Lillenaw Internet Futures Team. And recently, you know, we've, we've, we now have the towers to mount equipment. We have internet providers wanting to put equipment on the towers. We know where we need another tower, but that's not enough. It's not going to cover all the county. And Commissioner Ansari, you brought up something that, you know, is interesting and also came up last week. I did a presentation for Lift as we're now reaching out to all our planning commission members throughout the county, and that was a question that was asked there. How do we get our providers that sometimes will run cable right by an entity to reach a governmental entity but not attach, allow anyone in that pass to hook up? How do we, how do we encourage them to instead reach out and, and expand broadband? And that is one way. And if we could come up with a model, language and program that would work. And I'm being told, get closer to this microphone. Okay. Sorry about that. So that would really, really be a help to continue with that effort. And then finally, I agree that we need to come up with some type of a code of ethics. I think most of the time we have a seven zero vote and agree on things, and that's excellent. And then there are times where we don't agree on things. But differing viewpoints is healthy, and to have that discussion is healthy. But in the end, when we reach a decision, I think it's important that we not personalize things and that we can discuss these things staying on the facts and express our viewpoints in accordance. So I think a code of ethics would, would really help us with that. And those were my primary goals.
Thank you very much. So then that would bring us then to Commissioner Rettenbach.
I started out by saying, isn't our one goal to make life better for all Lillenaw County residents while protecting the environment and increasing economic prosperity? And then I kind of broke it down into the following: the Health Department, the Solid Waste Council, Landbank and Brownfield Authorities, Beta, Service Utilities and Treasurer. I think that we are very blessed to have, I see in the audience today, many volunteers that work on behalf of our efforts that the committees and commissions that we have. And we're lucky to have the people that are volunteers. I see at least five or six of them out there today, and we're very blessed to have those people working with us. I want to continue to encourage their input, and I appreciate their efforts. I, with the Health Department, I mean, since I ran for office in 2013, I've been working to try to get some sort of septic ordinance passed in this county. I do believe that Lillenaw County is a very unique property. They, the septic ordinance should be tailored to this community specifically. I know that there's talk about something happening at the state level, but I don't think that that would be the right fit for us. So clean water, beach inspections, septic and well inspections, the PFAS problems that we see, you know, going on are all things that need to be addressed, and I appreciate Tony's comment of, yeah, how you eat an elephant? Well, you got to take that first bite. So, you know, hopefully in some area we'll be able to improve the water quality in the county. Under the Solid Waste Council, I have pastoral setting because I think it's important that while we increase housing, which I didn't list as one of my goals, but I think fits into this as a goal, we want to think about place making and think about the density of zoning occurring in the villages that are already established and areas that offer some services and amenities already. I also have down here under Solid Waste Council, renewable energy, reduce light pollution, increase recycling, and we are going to be discussing the millage tomorrow. That's, it's definitely, it's a goal, but it's going to happen one way or another. So. The Landbank and Brownfield and Authorities, I have increased affordable housing through them. I think that it's been mentioned, the grants and other opportunities. We have to work with private enterprise, volunteer organizations that are already out there working, and we can increase that. And then with Beta, I'd just say, improve mass transportation. Maybe they need to think about smaller buses and more, more routes because it's, you know, I've been in the paper recently about my district being kind of cut off from Beta service this winter, and it's important to people to be able to count on public transportation, excuse me, and also to be able to take advantage of public transportation to reduce our carbon footprint. So I would like to see smaller buses and more routes. With the Service Utilities, last night I was trying to stream something. I called Netflix. I said, you know, what's the problem? They directed me to a thing called fast.com, and he goes, well, you don't have enough bandwidth to stream anything. And I was like, well, you know, I'm supposed to have the highest bandwidth available, but it's just not enough. And we need to do something. I would love to see fiber come up through the middle of this county, right up through Cedar. And then with the Treasurer, I think we need to start discussing the possibility of a tourism tax. Maybe it's not a tax, maybe it's a one-time thing, but we need to address short-term rentals and hotels and how the development is going to occur in this county and how we want to be able to provide more long-term housing and not just have everything go up for our short-term rental. So, that's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Rush.
Thank you. We all recognize that government is a puzzle, and every year we present our goals and hopes, dreams, wishes, but the reality of it is it takes a lot of investigation, expertise and commitment. There are a lot of goals. But first off, you will notice that I did not make a list of goals this year, and I did that for a reason. One, there was already an abundance of goals on the agenda, many of them that I agree with, some we may find common ground on. My most important was MERS and our debt, because that's what hinders us as a county, is our debt load. Our job is to monitor the budget and determine its priorities for the people that live in this county. And of course, substance abuse. For me, that's a very big issue for us in this county, and we have made some headway and are currently working to improve the programming for our citizens. You'll hear more about that over time. I do agree with more regulations, more rules, just increases taxation, and it places more hardships on our citizens. We talk about housing, regulation here, regulation there, and we talk about septic systems. We talk about all these things, but until we drill down into some of these ideas and goals, we're really not going to know how that's going to play out. So I guess at this time, we will continue to have discussions on the vast amount of goals that have been presented and see where we can find some common ground so that we can move forward. Thank you for your time.
Any other comments?
Okay, so then, then I guess we would, I would like to look at this and then try to, I would think there was a suggestion that we try to set six as a maximum, not to do more than six, I mean, unless you just can't cut them down more. So, I mean, if we went through this, I guess, does anybody want to make a suggestion as number one? Commissioner Rush.
I'd like to make the suggestion that this board comes to a conclusion in regards to the airport governance by the third quarter of this year so that that board can move forward.
I would agree with that. I mean, that's a, that's a pretty important thing for us to decide, liability-wise, whether we're going to be a part of that or whether we're not, but we have to decide.
Commissioner West.
We've got a, a number of decisions that we're going to make this year, and the airport is one of those. I don't, I don't know that that's a goal, that's a responsibility, but I, I think this discussion today ought to differentiate between those decisions that we need to make, responsible budget management, customer service, all of those things that we do because we're responsible to do them, and those things that we want to identify as goals that we all get behind and work forward to. I, I think we do have a responsibility to make a decision on the airport, and, and I think we're all committed to that. I don't think that's a goal. It's a responsibility. It's an activity that we must get involved in, but I see there, I see that different than what we're about today.
Commissioner Rush.
Just to clarify, and I believe it was stated in the SMART goals, if we don't have a timeline, that particular, it is an obligation, but without a timeline being attached to it, this could go on for five years. So that's why I raised the issue as a goal today. And my hopes is, yes, we do have a responsibility to make a decision, but my hope is, is that that decision does not linger month after month, year after year, which leaves that question forever open.
So I, I mean, I guess we have a motion to make it as a goal, and, and we have a second on it, so Commissioner Ansari.
Mr. Lawner.
I want to understand what the process here is going to be. You know, are we just going to pick goals randomly and make motions and vote on them to decide, and when we get to six, we're done? Or are we going to list all our, the goals that we are interested in pursuing in some kind of priority order and then vote on the final six? I'm just trying to understand what process we're trying to do here.
Okay, I was just going to go through and pick out six. When we pick the top six and we can vote and they pass, that would be it. But if you want to, I mean, we can list them all, set them up, I mean, and then, and wait till, you know, tomorrow, discuss them again, make our decision on Tuesday, next, a week from Tuesday, or we can, we can wait as long. I mean, we took till, what, April last year? So, I mean, there isn't, there isn't a set way to do it. So I, you know, I thought we were having this special meeting to make decisions. That's, you know, that's the way that there's been a new priority setup and a new way of doing things, and when we have special meetings, decisions are made. So that's...
And I don't disagree. I'm just trying to understand what the process is going to be because I don't know where the commonality is going to fall. And my assumption is, you know, people have what they think is important to them, and each of us does. And I didn't know if we could go through that to identify, here's the ones that most people agree with, and then there might be 10 of those, and now we got to pick the top six.
Okay. Do you want to do that first?
Well, I'm a little reluctant just to pick one by one by one by one, and then, you know, first six are the ones that we pick, and maybe that's not, that's not the ones that are most common to everybody. That's my only concern.
Commissioner Redd.
Well, I'm kind of where Tony is, is that, you know, I understand that, yeah, that's our responsibility to make a decision about the airport. As Ty said, you know, it's something that, you know, we need to do. And as Deb said, we should pick a time when we want to get it accomplished by. So, I mean, I think that that would be a worthwhile goal, but I'm not willing to make that one of the goals until I have that whole discussion of what it is, because then I'd like to go through and be able to prioritize myself, and then maybe tomorrow we could have the discussion where we get it down to six and vote again following Tuesday.
Commissioner Rush.
This is the problem I have with calling a special meeting for an issue such as this. This meeting should have been called as a study work session meeting, but instead it was called as an action meeting. So I'm really a little disappointed in the process from the start. It's out of the norm in how we usually discuss and handle goals, but here we sit today in a special meeting that's usually reserved for urgent county business and trying to get through the process of deciding goals. So here we are. We may want to think about this going forward.
Thank you. Any other comments? Commissioner Sotis.
I think the emails I saw coming out that originally it was planned to have a facilitator, which really would have been a benefit because in this type of a meeting, a facilitator could go up to the board and start to note the different comments and help us reach some form of consensus on the various goals as we went through. And it's unfortunate we weren't able to go ahead with, with that format, although I understand that probably should have been voted on by everyone, but it would have been a help. So I think we find ourselves getting stuck in discussion. We are here, so let's see if we can proceed to really discuss the things that are listed as goals and reach some consensus since we're here today, and then we can decide if we need to wait until tomorrow or if we might be able to conclude business today and come up with a list of six, ultimately six goals. But I think we need to do that by going through and kind of debating and discussing. That's why we're here.
Well, here's just a suggestion, and what I did is I took all of your feedback and put it into one correspondence, and I tried to put them in areas of common ground. Now, the specifics may not be common, but the subject seems to be a pattern, and by coincidence, there were six of them that surfaced that at least three commissioners listed. Now, they have, they have different views of those areas, but for example, if you look at that environmental issues, nine, there were nine goals from commissioners related to the environment. environmental issues, nine, there were nine goals from commissioners related to the environment. So that's, could be one area we look at. There were four responses on affordable housing, there were four responses on broadband expansion, there were four responses on tax-related issues, three on ethics, and three on tourism tax. So if you look at that as a start, there is some common ground that most of you seem to agree on, so maybe look at that and come up with those, those six right there, if you just stuck with those areas. And I know this is broad, environmental's very broad, and if you look at those comments I listed, there's a spectrum of issues, but at least there's some common ground that everyone wants to look at, some type of environmental goals. It looks like the majority of people want to look at affordable housing, broadband, expansion, I think most of you have talked about that, tax-related issues, tree abuse, listed ethics, and tourism tax, which really, we have not talked about much, three commissioners listed. So there is some common ground to get the dialogue started. I wish to proceed, it's up to you, but there is at least some areas that everyone seems to at least be interested in, so maybe start with those.
Yeah, I, you know, I guess I was thinking that we'd limit it to six, but I think with Commissioner Lettenbach and Anzor, he talked about, that we make just the list today. We can make them, have, these are priorities, and then the things that don't go on that list, we won't, and then we can make the six another day. But now, maybe we just make, if it's going to be 10 or 12, or whatever it is, we go through each of them and see if we want to keep, put that on the list today. And I'm, I'm fine with that, I, you know, I mean, I, so, I mean, if we just, we just, we have a motion, we have a second, do we, you know, and I guess my point is, do we want to put that on our list of 10? And that, if we vote on that and decide we do or we don't, then that's, that's where we start. And then we can go through all of these things.
Can I make one more suggestion? When I did this, when I was superintendent, we came up with the goals first, and then from there, we put specific objectives, people responsible, and timeline there, but we agreed on what the major goal was first. So from there, let's just use the airport as an example, let's just say that's one of the goals. Then, the next step would be, it has to be done by X state, as you suggested, and these, I'd call them, we'd call them champions, and we would assign one or two people to work on that, because if you have no one assigned, or if you have everyone assigned, then nothing happens. So if that was a goal, it could be that we need to make a decision on the airport governance by, I believe you said, September 2020, and Commissioners so-and-so will be responsible for working on that. So it gives some ownership to those goals and objectives, and by having six of them, most of Richard says, if you have more than six, you get lost in the quagmire. If you have six, that's basically, you can bring up each of the goals twice a year for update. And what we used to do is actually put goals on every single one of our board agendas, and there'd be an update every single month on one of the six goals, so everyone had two opportunities to update. Some of them were quicker, easier to accomplish, others, some were very easy to measure, some took a lot of time, some took short amount of time. What we did first is we came up with the general concept of the goals, and then assigned people, and then they came up with the specifics that came back to the full board for agreement on.
Commissioner West.
I think there are, I think there are six responsibilities that we have common agreement on, that I think we could set aside and just do them as part of our business. We've all agreed, unanimously agreed, that substance abuse is something that we want the county commission to be involved in. We've all agreed that murders is something that we all are committed to addressing. We've all agreed that customer service and service to our constituents is part of what we do. We've all agreed that we have to make a decision on the airport. We've all agreed that responsible fiscal management is something we're about. So I think we ought to set those aside and say, we're going to do those. Now what else are we going to adopt as a goal for this year that's above and beyond our responsibilities that we took an oath to deliver on? So I would like to take those six items off of our goal discussion and say, we've already agreed, we're going to do those. So let's agree on the other list, whether it's five, whether it's six, whether it's four, and move forward. With nine responses on environment, we have to have an environmental goal of some sort. With all of the responses on affordable housing, we got to have something, we can refine that later, we don't have to decide that, but that's got to be a category that we agree on. Broadband, we've, we've got a lot of support for that, let's say that's, we're going to work on that. The tax-related issues, we know we got to do that, so let's make that a goal, and we'll decide on where that is later with solid waste council, senior services, mileage, et cetera, et cetera. But we've agreed on that. So I, I don't think the things we've agreed upon already and we're currently working on deserve to be on a list of goals for our 2020 work. Those are things we just have to do. That's why a year ago, when we stood before the judge upstairs, we said, we're going, we have responsibility for this, let's do that. So I suggest we take those off and we talk about new initiatives as goals. That's my suggestion.
Any other comments? Okay, we have a motion on the table, for that being one of our goals, the airport commission or making a decision, aye. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
The motion fails, four to three. So, all right, so now, you know, is there any other suggestions? Do you want to just make a list now at this point? Mr. Anzor.
We have, we have a list here that it's broken down into categories. I would suggest we take the environmental category and pick something from that category as one of the goals. That's going to be my suggestion, that we work through these commonalities that have already been identified, to say, okay, in the environmental area, which, which one of these are we going to take a bite at? Doesn't mean we're going to do any of it, but at least we're going to address it.
Okay, so you're saying, first, we'll do environmental, maybe take them in the order that they're presented on here?
Okay.
All right, so, I mean, I don't see the clean water on there, but to me, that would be one thing to get that settled, try to get that settled, even though that's not on the list here.
Well, it should be, though.
It should be, and that should be environmental, I think.
But I mean, we should...
They're up in flux, and we have this, we have a decision out there that by July, we're going to terminate working with them, unless something gets settled, so...
But July, we're going to allow them to go in the direction that they choose to go, which is different than the direction we had originally set them up with, so, gives them their freedom to move on.
I can tell you, they are working on some options.
Right, and I'm expecting them to come to us, and I'm hoping that we can, as an environmental thing, we can help them out in some way. I know, we have been giving them $2,000, I don't know if that's going to change, or be less or more, but I would, I would think that would be a good environmental goal.
Is that a motion?
No motion. Commissioner West.
I think we've already done that. We already voted, and we've, we had their support to do this, we've supported that, they're moving forward with that. If giving $2,000, that's not a goal. I could adopt, I could support a clean water goal, but let's adopt a county clean water goal, not say we're going to adopt our goal to make a decision that we made a week ago. We already decided that, that's not a goal anymore, that's something we've done. So I would suggest that we have a clean water goal that involves well testing, septic inspection, you know, on and on and on, but not something that we've already done. Those aren't goals, that's a history.
Commissioner Suter.
I hear clearly what Commissioner West was trying to say, and I appreciate where you're trying to go with this discussion, and it's difficult at this moment. However, I think that our administrator may have presented a very good model to follow. Maybe, since we have these areas identified, identifying a member of the commission, one or more, who could work on, you know, there could be a commissioner working on more than one, but to work on developing the actual goal language and measurable objectives would be worthwhile, and then bringing those back for consideration to the full board, because that way, you know, if we agree, we want some things in environment, there could be some things pulled out of that and put into a tangible goal. So I think the idea of having a champion to work on it, or champions to work on each of these items and come back with measurable objectives would, would be very beneficial.
Commissioner Rusk.
I would volunteer myself to work on that environmental goal, because I am on the solid waste council and also on the health board, and included a lot of these things in my, in my goals, so I could write, try to write that goal, and try to write a goal for that. Be happy to work with someone else if they'd be interested in helping.
Well, is this, I mean, I guess is that, does the board want to do, do that, set up, let's say, two commissioners for each one of these issues, and then they go and write up on that, and then we can come back later and look at what's going, or, I mean...
I think so.
Commissioner Lautner.
I think this can be really much simpler than all that. I mean, what this is going to boil down to is, is there enough support on this board to even move forward, placing any of these as a goal? And if there is, then...
I agree.
Then, but as far as environmental, you know, we've got septic and well inspections on there, we've, I've heard a few reasons for doing it, but, but what I haven't heard is what we've done in the past, and, you know, the fact where we've moved since what we've done in the past and moved forward, and what we've decided to already do, and what we've taken action on, and what we're waiting for, with the records of the health department, that we are going to be able to align with our equalization department's records and find out what we're dealing with. Before we place a well and septic ordinance on all of our residents, or part of our residents, find out what we're dealing with first. As far as, then, our goal could be very simple, move forward with the ability we've got now to do so, to take care of any issues we find, but yet, don't play, place unburdened restrictions, goals, ordinances on residents where it isn't necessary. So you could really take these one at a time. Renewable energy, we're already way advanced in renewable energy. So what are you going to say, we as a county, are we going to, what are you talking about? Are we going to pass an ordinance where everybody in the county now has to do something in renewable, or are you talking about this campus? This campus is served by utility that's well over 50% renewable energy already, and moving higher and higher. So we've got renewable energy covered. Placing solar panels on this campus is never going to pay off with the, with the ability we've got through our utility. PFAS testing, for who? Here, this campus? Or are we going to force testing on every property out there? What? Water-related issues, pretty, pretty broad, in my opinion. And aren't we dealing with water now? We've got how many agencies dealing with water? How many? I think we need six last week, including our health department. You've got solid waste, we've got a real great recycling program now dealing with recycling waste. What, what do we want to do? Look at, somebody want to expand it further than what we're doing? That's going on it. Light pollution? So we're going to pass an ordinance? Are we going to go to blackout again, 9:00 PM in LeLah County? I really don't know for what and why. I know townships deal with that now. You know, the only thing I agree with is, let's get some pertinent facts on what you're, what we're dealing with. As far as environmental, let's get some pertinent facts first, and let's not overstep our townships. Our town, many, many of these things, I read here, they fall first on the responsibility of the townships. So I think you got to take them one at a time, and if there's four votes to put it on, then put it on, and then we can decide what you want to do with them. That's my, that's my opinion, and I can, and I can keep going, because, you know, we've got affordable housing. A few years ago, we developed a housing action committee that has, has done fantastic things already, in moving forward. I haven't got to ethics yet, so, okay.
Are you through for now?
I am going to yield presently.
I didn't hear that. What'd you say?
I said I yield presently.
Commissioner Suter.
I appreciate Commissioner Lautner's passion, I really do. And without probably realizing it, when you started down the path of septic...
I'm laughing, okay.
When you started down the path of septic well, you actually laid out a reasonable goal we could start with, which I agree with you. Finding out where we are is really important, and we've put something in place. And so if you're looking at producing measurable goals to look at, you know, our data that comes in from the health department and what comes in from equalization, would be a good, a good first portion of that goal and a good objective you could put to it. So you're on the right track on that one, and I think we could do the same for all our others. And I would be more than willing to work on both broadband and affordable housing.
Commissioner Anzor.
I like Commissioner Lautner's idea of, let's take these one at a time here, one area at a time, like environmental. In my opinion, we're not going to do all these things. So I think the commonality here is in the septic and well inspection area, and having the pertinent facts, I think, is very important, especially in this area. So, you know, I don't think that those are two separate things, I think one depends on the other before you can even make any kind of decision. So the renewable energy, that's too global for me. The PFAS testing, I think there's a lot of investigation going on at the state level, for sure, and the federal level as well. I don't think we need to wade into that at this point in time.
We don't have the money to do that, number two.
Water-related issues, that's just too broad for me. Solid waste recycling services, we are going to have to address that issue as far as what we're going to do with the expiry mileage anyway, so I don't think we need to address that as a goal. I think that we can, that we're going to have to do that, just like we're going to have to do some of these other things. Light pollution, I understand the concern, I don't want to take a bite at it this year. It's important, but I don't think it's as important as water quality. So I would like to narrow this field of environmental issues down to the septic well, realizing that the pertinent facts are going to be very dependent in there, as part of that. So that's my suggestion, and I think we should go through the other areas in a similar manner. But that's my suggestion for this, this particular area.
Well, and I, and I think if you, we nail it, narrow it down to that, I think we can get some consensus on this.
Exactly.
You know, and, and, I mean, we really do have to look at, we don't really have any authority over the township zoning. Many of these suggestions, to me, interfere. The county has done what it can with light, lighting, by installing lights that are cut off at, you know, 90%, because they only shoot straight down, and we don't have any in this campus that, that actually pollute the air. So we've done what we can with that, and then we have to leave it to it. And so we have to look at, what authority do we have? And even, you know, when you suggested that we make these ordinances and... And even, you know, when you suggested that we make these ordinances and suggest them, we are sort of invading the townships. All we can do is make the suggestion. I hope you realize that. We've done, we did that specifically with the fire, it was 4th of July fireworks. And when we gave them to the townships and said, if you all use the same one...
Exactly.
That our sheriff will enforce it. But if you change him, he's not going to enforce it because he can't determine what every township decides. He doesn't know what's right or wrong. And they all changed them. So, so he couldn't really enforce it. So I'm just, just saying that they, they have that kind of authority and all we can do is suggest. So to think we're going to make a, make these decisions, we're not, you know. Commissioner Wessel.
I, I like where Tony's going and, and I support that and I'd be very comfortable with that. I don't want us to lose sight of the fact that, and it's easy to say, well, the townships have that responsibility. We do have a responsibility to be a convener and we do have responsibility to model. And, and so there are some things we can do. We do review all township zoning regulations. That's a part of our, of our duty. But I, I agree it's limited and I would be very happy to focus just on septic and well system and see what we know. What have we learned from what the health department data has just given us from the action that we took last year? And then is there anything else we ought to do? I'd be happy to have that be one of our goals. I think that's progress.
Commissioner Redmond.
The health department does have the ability to pass ordinances and because we are a two-county health department, a health code could be developed through the health board with Fancy County that would then be presented to this board. And then what we would be looking for and from this board is their support. So.
Okay. And so, I mean, is that, could we have a motion or do we just want to decide that's it as a consensus here? Put that on as one of the goals with the pertinent information? I mean, I want to know, I want to, I would like to see that comparison of is there water cleaner than ours? That's, I mean, I really do, if we have to spend the money or give the money to whoever does the testing, if before I make a decision that we tell our, you know, constituents to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to have their septic wells and spend, you know? Yeah.
Are we going to do this by consensus? Do you want to do motions? What do we want to do?
Well, I'd like to do motions and that, then we all know and then we get a vote and we can move on, hopefully.
So the motion to, that our goals would be pertinent facts, find out all the pertinent facts prior to any additional ordinances?
Yes. Is that your motion?
Yes. I'll support it.
I need to reword that.
Could you repeat that, please?
My motion is, my motion is that we will receive pertinent facts prior to any additional ordinances.
So...
So to speak to that, speaks to what I spoke with on...
Yes. Go ahead.
Getting the pertinent facts on, getting the information from the health department, getting the information from the equalization, find out what the pertinent facts are, find out what we're dealing with, where, et cetera, if. And then move on.
Commissioner Wessel.
I don't like the wording of Commissioner Lautner's motion. I wonder if we can have some discussion about fine tuning it and amending it because I think the real purpose of, of that motion that I just heard was delay any decision making and let's just keep talking. And I think it's, I think what I'd like to do is amend her motion and say that we will as a commission, review existing data and put forward a recommendation on whether or not we need to do anything relative to well testing and relative to septic inspection. That's quite a different motion than saying we're going to do this and not have an ordinance. And that, Commissioner Lautner's motion makes me uncomfortable because I think that's what we've been doing in this county for 15 years, is I reviewed all of the past work on septic inspection. We just, we, we've continued to just look at data and, and tell ourselves we didn't have to do anything. So I, I would like to amend my motion to say we will, amend your motion.
I wish it was...
To say we will study the issue and put forward a plan to do whatever it is we need to do. And if that plan is to do nothing, then we won't do anything.
Commissioner, well, wait. I mean, are you going to second this or is that...
It was a lousy motion.
I'm not seconding that one.
Okay.
But I would like to...
All right. So the amendment fails for lack of a second.
Right.
So Commissioner Anderson.
My intent in looking at this category of environmental was to narrow this list down to one goal, which was septic and well inspection, realizing that we're going to have to have the pertinent facts in order to make that decision. So I will not support this motion just because that's not what was my intent. My intent was to narrow this down to one of the goals listed here, you know, not PFAS, not light pollution, it's the well and septic. That's the one that I want us to concentrate on. So I will not be supporting this motion because that's what I'm, that's what I would like us to do. Focus this on one goal, realizing that, yeah, we're going to have to have the pertinent facts.
Well, I just, you know, I guess I have to disagree with, with Commissioner Wessel. This board has decided time and again that we don't want a septic ordinance. But people refuse to accept that, so it keeps being, bringing brought back up. I mean, it has been voted on and it has been turned down. And the last time was when Casey Noonan was here. It was voted on to move forward with a septic ordinance and it was turned out. But this is a whole new board and we start all over. So it gets brought up again. So I'm just saying, the board, you're saying for over years and years, nothing's been decided. But it has been time and time again, but it keeps being brought back. So it isn't like we don't do anything. We make a decision. Some people don't like it, so we move forward again. Commissioner Redmond.
As a commissioner, I just try to represent the people that I have in my district and in the county that speak to me on particular issues. And I, I know that I have a broken record and as I stated earlier, since 2013, when I first started running for office, this is something that I've been working on. Also, to repeat again, this is something that has to come from the health board. This board cannot put together a septic ordinance, okay? We can approve a septic ordinance that the health board puts together. And that's what I would like to work towards.
But, but doesn't, don't your constituents already have the regulations on septic?
We have a patchwork of ordinances in the Glen Arbor Township, Cleveland Township, Empire Township, and Village of Empire.
Mr. Law.
Thank you for that question because that's what I, that's another point I was just going to make, a couple of them. We have studied this issue in depth at least three times in the last 20 years. And we all, I believe everybody at this table heard the great one-day presentation on septic and how they work. So that being said, the other point I was going to make is that many townships have gone out on their own to do their own ordinances as they're allowed to do. So that leaves the county. What, what, what would be different? What would we want to do except to try to place overruling ordinances upon the entire county with a whole new ordinance? Now, as my motion was, what I was trying, it just stands, trying to, trying to do is without an ordinance, I do not believe it's necessary for us to do an ordinance. And that's what, to force, to force the septic and well inspections on all of our citizens. If we're concerned about our lakes, then we can take the information that we're going to get and we're going to know if there's a home that does not have a current septic system. And we can, we can approach those people and ask them to voluntarily have an inspection of the system. If they choose not to, we can go further. But we have, we, we have done many things through the health department. We, we stopped some of the splits along the lakes as, as being developed. So there's nowhere, if it's not presently a split, it can't be developed with a septic system. It would have to be a holding tank. We're allowing holding tanks in those, in those other areas and the alternative systems around the lakes because that's supposed to be the cleanest option possible. And, and occasionally the mounting systems. So we have done some things along the lines of those septic systems. But we don't know yet whether we're dealing with one home. I asked one of our pumpers, I said, tell me, how, how many homes would you guess are actually polluting into our lakes right now? If you were to name, pick a lake and, and name, how many do you think are actually putting that out into the lakes? And he said, first answer was, I think maybe one, maybe no more than three. So do, are we dealing with anything or are we not dealing with anything? But at least we'll know once we have the pertinent facts. So that was, that was the reason for the motion. I didn't hear an amendment. I don't know if you have an amendment for it. Because I think essentially it's saying the same thing.
Commissioner Wessel.
I don't, I don't have an amendment because I, I think we ought to vote on this, but we did have 11 experts, I think, came to testify in front of us. We did have lots of facts. We had facts from the Benzy County, we had facts from Michigan State, we had facts from the watershed. We know, we know that, that our current septic systems, we have up to 25% or so that don't meet our standards. This group doesn't always deal with facts very well. Because if the facts aren't like we want to accept them, we ignore them. I, I, I would like to vote down Melinda's motion and then I would like to make a motion that we move forward with pulling those facts together again with the health department and, and decide if in fact there's something that we need to do to protect this precious water resources that we have in this county. So I call the question.
Does that require a second?
All right. So this is for to see if we're going to vote on the motion. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes four to three. All right. So then...
Four to three this time. I didn't catch that. It sounded like...
We wanted to call the question.
Yeah.
And voted aye.
And who voted no.
So it was five to two. Sorry. I thought Commissioner Wessel said, seconded. But it doesn't matter.
Commissioner Wessel messed up.
Okay. So, all right. So it was five to two. So now we'll vote on her, her mo, the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion fails four to three. Do we have another motion?
I would move that we put together a couple of commissioners to work with the health department to collect and review current information on septic and well system inspection needs.
Second.
Commissioner Law.
A year or so ago, we had a real problem with committees. And this board disbanded a bunch of committees. So I'm kind of concerned about now, we're going to break up into little committees and, and bring recommendations back to us or are we going to do things as a committee of the whole? Because I think that you can have, a couple of people are going to put exactly what they want. In fact, I'd be happy to serve on this committee myself. Tony and I, I recommend to come up with an idea, review the pertinent facts, as I said, and come up with a solution we might recommend to this whole board. I expect this board then would tear down parts. You pick any two on this table and I expect this board would tear down parts of it. But it's got to get back to this committee of the whole if we're going to act as a committee of the whole, which we decided to do. So are we going to go really back to all these committees again or are we going to act as a whole board?
Well, I mean, that really hasn't been decided, other than Commissioner Sutter's little suggested that we have champions for each one of the things. So I think that will decide that and, you know, and I, I respect that you volunteered to be on this one. And so, but I don't think that decision's actually been made by this board at this time and it has been suggested. Commissioner Sutter's little.
The idea of having champions is not to have committees. It's to have a couple of people draft language to bring back to the committee of the whole to spell out a goal. I think that's the trouble we're running into right now. If we could get a couple of folks to just put together the basic goal language for today. In fact, I'd suggest we take a five-minute break in a moment and do just that. Let's try to put together a couple of goal statements and that we can discuss that, you know, we know, we know, we know quite a few things on this septic goal right now. We know it's, it's been studied before. We know this is a new board. We know that there are certain elements that need to be included. There are certain elements that shouldn't be included. We know we want to look at pertinent data that has, that the health department, HD, have. We know we want to support the effort of the health department. Let's take a little break and just put the language together and a goal. You know, have a couple of us work on that and come back together and see if we can't agree on something.
Commissioner Rush.
I would like to see us at this point accept the septic well system under environmental. I would like us to wait to see as a committee of the whole, the information that is discovered so we can identify if we have an issue and if we need to take any action. And then at that time, putting a couple commissioners together or if we should decide to discuss this as a whole. I think that we should look at this when we see the need. But right now, we're trying to orchestrate the whole event. We're here today to decide on simple goals. Are we going to accept septic and well or water or whatever language as a broad goal and then drill in and decide how we're going to handle that? We've got information we've requested. We've already been working on this issue. So that's my two cents today.
Commissioner Law.
I, was that, I, I support the first part of what you said as a motion. I think we can move forward and, and I think that that's the absolute right path to take right now. And if I'll speak to it, if that was a motion. It's fourth. Okay. Reason being that...
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
I'm sorry. We already have a motion.
No, okay, speak to it.
We didn't, yeah, we didn't, we didn't have a motion. I don't know that that was a motion.
First part of what's...
There is a motion on the floor.
I may want to share my second.
Right. No, I know that, but he, she, I think she's talking about a second motion and I'm trying to say that we can't have one here. Unless it was an amendment to yours. I'm sorry, did you, were you through? For now.
For now, if we're going to continue because otherwise I want to speak.
Okay.
Okay.
I think I'm prepared to withdraw my motion if I can have Commissioner Rush to say what she'd like to have happen. I like the sounds of what, that we look at the data and come back here as a committee of the whole and look at the data.
Are you officially...
I want to know what's, 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 what's on the table if I withdraw my motion, but I...
We're still in the discussion phase.
Did you?
What I...
Would you restate what you'd like to see happen?
What I said is I would like to see this board at this particular time... What I said is, I would like to see this board, at this particular time, to adopt or accept as a, one of the goal choices, the septic water issue under environmental. I stated that we have, we already have work in progress, and in order for us to make any kind of forward decision, we need to look at the facts and the data. And once that data comes into this board as a whole, then at that time, we, as a board of a whole, can make the decision what the next steps should or would look like.
Mr. Chair, I believe if we're going to do something on this, we have to do it as a commission, and I withdraw my motion if Commissioner Rushden would replace it with the motion she just talked about.
Is that a contingency with your motion?
No, you can either withdraw it, or you don't.
Exactly. Take the gamble, Ty, what have you got to lose? You can almost raise your hand again and make another motion, or amend.
I withdraw my motion, and trust Commissioner Rushden will move forward.
And does this, I can agree?
Well, that's what I meant.
I agree.
So you want to try to make a motion out of that?
Before I make a motion, I would like to know if there's any other comments that y'all would like to make at this time, or if somebody else has got a better motion. How's that, Ty?
Commissioner Anderson.
All I want is a goal.
Okay, and I will be...
And, you know, reeling with that, this particular environmental issue. And how we, what we do with that goal, we're going to have a discussion on all of these goals.
We'll be determined.
And I don't want to have that big, long discussion today. Let's make the goal.
Michelle, do you have the language?
Thank you, you spoke very slowly, so I could get it. What I wrote down was, Rushden said that she would like to see this board, at this particular time, adopt, accept, one of the goal choices, the septic-water issue under environmental. She stated that we already have work in progress, and in order for commissioners to make any forward decision, commissioners need to look at the data, and then at that time, the board as a whole can make the decision as to what the decision is.
To make a decision on what direction we're going to move in.
To what direction?
That's my motion.
That I support.
Commissioner Ritten.
So does the, does the motion just stop as resetting the goal as environmental, septic, and water? I mean, is that the end of it, or is it all the rest of that?
No, that is the end of it.
That is the end of it.
That is the end of it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Under the word environmental, stop at the word environmental, correct?
I'm sorry.
Stop at the word environmental, correct?
Under in the environmental choices, we have chosen the item number one.
But under the goal choices, the septic-well system, is that what you were saying? Because you said septic-water issue under environmental.
As stated.
We have a second.
Okay, but I want to make clear that, I think what's really important to this motion is that the other half of the motion is how we're going to move forward with that motion. And that is, as a committee as a whole, and review the pertinent facts.
Does it not say that?
No.
You said to stop after the word environmental, as opposed to what I all read the first time.
Then I didn't hear it correctly.
You want everything I read when I was recapping?
Yeah.
Got it.
I want everything.
That I support.
Next, the support, okay.
May we speak to it?
Certainly.
Okay, because as she said, Tony, to move forward, as a committee as a whole, we will look at all the facts here. We will be able to determine a direction. Because I think, having talked to you, I know what you are thinking and where you are going, I believe, I hope. So from there, as a committee as a whole, we can move forward at that point. We're going to know some facts at that point, and be able to move forward in a responsible direction, rather than do a shotgun approach. Because systems that are, that don't meet standards are not necessarily failing systems. So let's get some facts, let's find out what we're dealing with. And that's what I think this motion does.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we take a five-minute recess.
The motion passes seven to zero.
Take a break, five-minute break. I don't know why. All right, so we're back in session. And so let's move on to the next item, could we?
Yeah, they have to be quiet out there.
Please, we're back in session, please.
Sorry, sorry, Mark.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Been here a long time.
The next one would be broadband, yes.
I'd just like to make a comment before we get started again. I was comfortable with the goal, just stopping after the word environmental, septic well, whatever, water, period. And then the objectives are those other things about, you know, measuring and everything later. And of course, we're going to do that with all these. So as we go forward, if we could just keep it to, you know, like, and develop affordable housing, one aspect, and then with the understanding that of course, we're going to be making the decisions later, based on the, you know, filling in of same. Just so we don't have to spend another hour and a half on each one, that we could, you know, streamline it a little bit.
I hope you're right.
Okay.
Well, I disagree, because I think that we have to know how we're going to move forward on these, if we're going to move forward. We have to agree or disagree on how we're going to move forward. So we need to know how we're going to get to those objectives. Now we have a goal on how we're going to get there, and, you know, and whether we're going to get there or not.
Okay. Yeah, so, you know, I mean, I guess we're looking at affordable housing, we're looking at, to me, all of the things that are on this list are actually already in place.
We're already doing them.
Yes, they're in place, they're doing what they can. Planning Commission is, Action Committee is planning on coming forward and making a presentation to us. We heard from a member from that today. So, I mean, we can make it as a goal, but I think we need to wait till we get the information of what their plan is, if we're going to try to act on it. So, I mean, I'd say we make that a goal, but we're going to work with the Planning Commission, and the Housing Action Committee, and the Land Bank. I don't think we don't work with them. Sometimes I think we worry about them doing things for profit, as opposed to help housing. You know, and that worries me, and I think we made, one time, decided not to let them work for just profit. And that was the only time that I think we've ever disagreed with the Land Bank in what they were doing. But, I mean, if someone would make a motion, just, we'd have, as a goal, working with them, or something, I mean, and then maybe we can move on to broadband. Commissioner Law.
I would, I would make a motion that we continue our partnership with Fast Track Land Bank, Brownfield Rural Development, and the Housing Action Committee.
Support. Commissioner Anderson.
I did have a suggestion, and related to housing, that we have a model zoning ordinance that we can suggest to the townships. But I think, I think we're going to get that from the Planning Commission. So I'm fine with this motion, but I just wanted that out there, that, you know, I'm, I have the expectation we're going to see that. Thank you.
Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. We're on broadband now.
I would make the motion that we accept the broadband expansion, explore the federal and state grants, consider looking at a common language for franchise agreements, something that we might be able to share with our township partners, tower options and partnerships, and partnerships with service utilities. Support.
Any comments? I just would have to say, we have to look, you know, when we talk about, you know, the, the, what was the one, common language for franchise agreements, that's really not how we can, we can suggest it. We can't...
Correct.
That's controlled by the townships.
Right.
Okay, just so we know that.
That is, I think, a clear understanding that is, commissioners on this board recognize. And, you know, we may come to the point where we may not want to take up that aspect of this goal, because maybe townships are not interested in that from the county, but it doesn't hurt to ask.
Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. So then that would bring us to tax-related issues. Commissioner Russell.
I'd like to suggest that we move the tourism tax, or use tax, up under that category as just one possibility, to support road patrol, or the sheriff's boat, or whatever, to protect our county by tourists and short-term rentals. But rather than make it a separate category, just put that all under, under the tax-related issues.
Good idea.
Commissioner Law.
We're not allowed to do one of those taxes. And I'm trying, I'm reckoning, trying to remember which it was. It's either a tourism, or the short-term rental tax, because we're not a big enough county. I think population-wise, we have to be maybe twenty-five thousand.
There's a legal process you have to go. I think maybe your goal is to maybe explore it, because you're right, there are some mandated way you can do it. But I think with the feedback, was, let's at least explore it.
Yeah, to explore, it's fine. One or the other, or both. I don't think we, it's an option for the county.
You're right, there is some...
I believe it's the tourism tax that we can't do, as a county, because we're too small, but that's why we could, we could explore and work with the legislature.
Commissioner Russell.
A tourism tax does not sit well with me. If I read in the fine print, we're looking at a tourism tax on a specific group of people. Was that your intent? A tourism tax on short-term rentals, or some such thing? And I think that targets a singular group, and I'm opposed to that. We have no hotels in this county where typically you would find that type of a tax. But to me, that's egregious on those citizens in our community, so I would not support this.
Well, I guess I would request that that be, we talk to that separately. Because I want to support the rest, but if you put that in there, I wouldn't, so, and we can do that, if we take that out separately. I appreciate it. Is there any other statements about, you know, the tax-related issues?
Just clarification, are we putting that in, or taking it out?
Taking it out, we're going to explore it separately.
Okay.
We'll leave it where it was, is basically what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying right now. Commissioner Anderson.
I didn't hear a motion. Are we looking at...
I'm looking for a motion, and I'm hoping you'll give me one.
Well, I'm not smart enough to do that, I don't think. Shoot. Are we looking at investigating each of these, exploring them, or are we saying, "We're going to do these"? All of them.
I believe if we vote for this, we will be looking at this as our, some of our goals, as our goals. And I don't know, which one, do you have one you'd want to take out?
I got some issues with more than one, but I don't have a problem talking about it. So if it's a common thing, that we want to look at all of these as one group goal, I'm fine with that.
We can do each one individually, you know? I'm just saying, right now, we include these all as a goal, at some point, we're going to decide which ones we're going to do and not do.
Okay, that's fine.
You know? And that's all, that's how I'm trying to approach it anyway.
So if we support this, which I do, the headline isn't that we've agreed as a county commission to reduce property taxes by such and such a mill, it's to explore options related to that. Because I don't know what that would cost us.
And I'm thinking that's what all of these, when we get through. I mean, we're going to explore whatever we set on these as goals, and we're going to decide yes or no, as has happened before.
So we just need to put the word "explore" before the rest of the words in bold.
And everything.
And with, Clark and I will get together and come up with a condensed list of the goals, so we'll work on that.
Somebody make a motion.
Do we have a motion?
Who picked these things? Somebody wants to did these things, please make the motion.
It's a grouping of different things. So just, you can make a motion.
All right, no motion, and I guess we'll move on then to the ethics. I guess that's not going to be a goal. No one's... Okay, Commissioner Russell?
I move that as a commission, we explore the tax-related issues as listed in our goals document.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes six to one. Thank you. So then that brings us to the ethics policy. Do we have any motions or anything for this? I mean, I've looked at the NACO thing, I read through it, you know, I think it has a good intent, but I don't see it where it applies to us, in my own, my own estimation. But, I mean, that's just that, you know, studying it for the little bit that I did. I think we, we worked very well, and we are ethical, and I don't, you know, I mean, if, if there's any unethical things, I always see that there's good intent in them. You know, we may, you know, and to me, of course, the obvious one to me was the donations to charities. I mean, there's always good intent, and it's for to help the people. But to me, it's an unethical thing to do donations to charities. That's not a government thing to do. And it's actually illegal, but we, we work our way around it, and we do it. So, you know, so I, and then when I read that, that was the important part of it. You have to look at the intent. Even if we do the wrong thing, at least the people who are doing it have the right intent. Doesn't make it right, to me, but I understand that. Commissioner Russell.
And I listed this as one of my proposed goals, and I'm less concerned, I don't believe ethics has been an issue for us, I don't believe it has. I oftentimes think we could do business together better. And whether that's a goal, or we have a workshop sometime over the next year where we talk about how we want to work together, I think we could always improve in working together, and disagreeing together, and that's why I put this on here.
Commissioner Anderson.
I put it on there. I also had listed it as one of mine, but I also don't think this is necessarily one of the highest priorities that we need to address, so I'm willing to drop it for this year.
I just want to say that there's no legal remedy for an ethics violation for a commissioner. There are laws. When we take our oath of office, we take that oath under the Constitution, which gives us limited power to act. In reading over this sample example, I think that we lose sight sometimes in regards to our responsibility being elected. And I know Commissioner Russell a lot of times speaks about, you know, we need to come together, we need to all agree together, and consensus on this, that, and the other thing. But the fact of the matter is, the people that live in our districts have different views on many different topics. We are elected as the representative for the majority in our districts. We are elected as the representative for the majority in our districts. Whoever gets a majority vote in any district becomes the Commissioner. That's who we represent. It's not, it, it doesn't mean we can't be kind, or appreciative, or respectful to our fellow commissioners, but we represent the people in our district. That's our first job. When I look at this, on page nine, I was extremely concerned when I read the statement in here, that the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board in this sample reaffirmed the best practices, such as putting loyalty to the county as a whole above personal interest, individuals, districts, and particular groups. That's concerning to me. That's not the mandate that was given to me under our Constitution. So I think we should be very careful when we start looking at, um, sample language for us to follow, without realizing what our real responsibility is. So I bring that to the table for you all to consider.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing no motion, we'll move on to the tourism tax. Commissioner Wester.
I'd, I'd like to speak to that, and, and I don't know that the tourism tax makes sense to Leland County. It has come up, um, in, uh, in the Housing Action Committee, when it speaks to short-term rentals, taking away housing inventory. It has come at township meetings, when I hear about houses out on the lake shore that house twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty people, and demanding the services of the fire and the, and, and, and the sheriff's department. Um, and, and I do believe we've got a request from the sheriff for a vote, much of that could, there are some things we do as a county that maybe the people that vacation here could help us do without asking our, our residents that are struggling to pay. Um, if, the, it's also a way maybe to limit short-term rentals and keep that housing inventory there, and I see, I'd rather have it being called a use tax rather than a tourism tax, because I think that's really what it is.
That's why I put it forward.
Mr. Reddick.
I think that, um, the, the, I think I had it on there, if I didn't, I thought about it. What I, and what I was thinking, basically, is the first responders, I mean, it, it puts a lot of stress on this county to have the inputs of the number of people that we have, and, um, and it, and it does affect housing as well. So it all kind of ties together, I'm not sure how to implement that, you know, use, use tax, or whatever you want to call it, but I do think that we should think of a way, something that would mitigate that problem, that issue.
That through?
Yes.
Commissioner.
Um, I mentioned early, earlier, the, the conservancy property, and I really think that we need to know, um, in detail, how much we're losing every year in tax dollars to those pieces. Lori Spencer spoke about it at our last, um, when she presented the L, the, four-four-twenty, yeah, whatever it was, report. She spoke about the thousands of acres in that, in her concerns. So first there, again, we should know pertinent facts. What are we talking about? Because I know some pieces that are in the conservancy, the landowners continue to pay taxes on, but there's a segment that, that do not collect taxes. So, um, once we know that, and if it's a number large enough for us to be worried about, worried about, as Lori indicated, then, um, perhaps we can move for some sort of a pilt for those dollars, because it's, it's becoming alarming, the, the number of acres that, that there are. On top of federal govern, federal acres, state acres, church acres, um, there's a lot of, lot of property that doesn't pay taxes, churches and schools, there's a lot that don't pay taxes, and that burden's falling on the rest of our citizens.
Commissioner Ansari.
I have no interest in wading into the topic of a tourism tax or short-term rental tax. This is a local issue at best. There's a lot of people already upset with the amount of governmental interference in this area. I have no interest in pursuing this at all.
My only comment is, why do we want to bite the hand that feeds us? Because without tourism, what industry, what large industry do we have in this county?
We have no hotels.
We have no hotels, exactly.
Or limited.
So I agree.
Commissioner Suss.
I think the word said explore the tourism tax, and, and I think Commissioner Lotner was talking about a totally different thing in terms of lost taxes from church or schools and conservancy, both being issues. I think the townships are now, I know Leland Township and, and Centerville are talking about short-term housing, and I know the Housing Action Committee has talked about that. Perhaps if we said support, or learn more, or support or explore the efforts that are ongoing, because I know some of the, um, townships are looking at, that's more of a fine than it is a tax on short-term rentals by putting in specific language, because they feel it is a problem in terms of, of cohesive neighborhoods that are being, um, finding themselves with lots of vacant, uh, homes for most of the year. But that's something that's being handled on that level. I'm not, I think, I think the exploration, I'm not sure exactly, um, what was the end goal on having this, except for the fact to explore if there's any benefit. There's no harm in exploring, that doesn't mean you're committed to doing it. And, and if it were to be done, you know, it may already be being done at, at different levels through other means.
Yeah, I mean, I know Suttons Bay Village has a, a, a law that they've put in place where they have to register for short-term rentals, there's a fee for it, then they, they have to have someone who oversees it, it's not, so they're, you know, their zoning is, is putting these rules in place, and they are collecting money for it, as, because it's become almost predominant in Suttons Bay, where, um, many of the homes now are, are in short-term rental.
Yeah, no, I was just going to say, I, I know one of my neighboring townships also has an ordinance, and there's a, on, on short-term rental, so if you're going to go into the short-term rental business, I think it's just short of three hundred dollars, I was going to try to look at it, that you'll pay yearly per rental that goes to the township. Is that the right dollar amount or not? I don't know, but it's three hundred dollars to go towards the, the policing, et cetera. Does it offset to the dollar or close? I don't know. Or are they making money on it? I'm not sure, but they also have many of the things you just listed.
Okay, so is there any other, any other comments? Do we have, huh, yes.
From what I see, uh, we have decided on four goals, so I would bring back to the table the airport goal, only because I am interested in, um, this board making a decision by the third quarter this year.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
We've said through, young lady.
Yeah. That's our goal.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a target that we can shoot for. Are we going to get there? Maybe not, but I'm looking for the effort on this board to, you know, make a decision.
Come to a decision.
Come to a decision.
Any other comments? Yes.
Well, certainly, I mean, we've had several public hearings already, we've had several presentations here before our board, and I think that, um, setting a time limit of when we should make our decision is very prudent, and I think it would be in the benefit of, uh, the airport as a whole, overall, you know, is, is a big user of the airport, uh, for it to be settled, and I'd like to see it settled as well.
Well, with that said, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Just a minute.
Yes, I'm through.
I'm sorry.
Um, it doesn't stop there for the board, the airport board.
No.
There's going to be added work that needs to come into play, which is going to require probably more of this board's, uh, input, so, thank you.
Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven to zero, so now we have five plus. All right. Any other comments? Commissioner Wester.
To that end, and I don't know if this is the appropriate time to do that, but Kevin invited me to, uh, to go to the airport.
He'll be here tomorrow, along with Nate, Elger, and I, and we'll give a full update.
Okay.
But one of the things that Ty asked for, and maybe all of you should do it, is, and he'll announce this tomorrow, but if you'd like, if anyone would like a tour of the airport Friday morning at nine o'clock, you come to the airport, he'll give you the tour, it's just, there's no business, it's just any commissioner wishes to come and get a tour of the airport. If you haven't done it, I suggest you do it. I've done it twice, it's very informative, just the behind the scenes, really nothing about the government, so I think it gives you a better insight on how complex the airport operation is, so, but Kevin will talk about that, but it'll be Friday at nine AM if you want to check.
We're talking Valentine's Day, February fourteenth, nine AM.
Have you been there, Ty? Behind the scenes?
Any other Commissioner comments?
I have been there.
Hey, public comment? Please come forward.
Betty Boucher, Elmo Township. In the discussion of the septic and well water, well, well se, well and septic issue, I noticed that none of you brought up the issue of our groundwater, which is one of the biggest sources of water outside of the lakes, and, um, I'm sure you're going to take that into consideration when the discussion comes up for checking on, making sure that our groundwater is safe and clean, because it can seep from one property to another, and it isn't just septics that are located on the lake, there are septics all throughout the county that are not on the lake. Take that into consideration.
Thank you.
It's been suggested, Gwen O'Gair, Cleveland, it's been suggested that it's up to citizens to test our well water. Well, if it's twenty bucks a time, and you should probably do it once a month, what you're doing is putting in another, because you never know. You're putting in another cost of living here, and I was imagining a Realtor saying, um, by the way, they would never say this, but if they were honest, they would, this is the only state in the Union where there are no septic, um, regulations, so when you buy here, you really should get your drinking water tested at least once a month. Hello? This is our drinking water. Our children are drinking this. We are drinking this. So, um, I just happen to be married to somebody who's really involved in this issue. So for instance, um, codes were not introduced until the late seventies, so for instance, we know that on our lake, sixty percent of the wells are over forty years old. Forty-three percent well and beyond fifty years old. Basically, there are a lot of barrels in the front lawn. I agree with Will that we need more data, and there is, Leland, our clean water is on an extremely good track. There is new technology, they can measure fecal content in water, and they can tell whether it's human or ducks and geese. So yes, there's tremendous work being done on this, and I just hope that you, as a board, will support the right of the citizens of Leland County, that you will take action to keep us safe, our children safe, our grandchildren safe, and support clean water as a right for every citizen. So thank you for your work on this.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing none, we have the Commissioner comments.
Well, I have just one, just because the administrator turns the clock off doesn't mean that it's, uh, not, not later than this.
I was going to say, did a good job less than an hour.
Okay, seeing none, I would say this meeting is adjourned. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yep, quick to that. As far as testing our drinking water once a month, do we do our well testing at county once a year as per code recommendation?
It's either once or twice. I think it's twice.
Once or twice a year. Okay. All right, thank you.
But that's public water, that's a little different.
Sure, but it, it, many of those are just.
The jail gets more, inspected more often than that.
By freeze hydrants. Um, also, there is a, the most critical thing for our groundwater, since septic systems don't go down to groundwater unless we're sitting in wetlands, um, is wells that have not been capped, and there is a program where you can come and get any wells on your property that are not capped, capped at no cost, through the meat program, through the, um, soy conservation district. So if anybody knows of a well on their property that's not capped, it, it needs to get capped so that, because that's a direct line into our groundwater.
Any other Commissioner comments? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, boys.